All right, is everyone ready? Standing. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:34. I will call this meet the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting for the Grotton Town Council to order at 5:34 PM. All members are present, consisting of myself, Chair Andre Baumgartner, Councillor David McBride, and Councillor Scott Westerville. Calendar and communications. No communications.
Well, there's been many, many emails regarding interests of various committees. I think we'll go through that. Nothing, nothing other than parties that are interested in being.
Excellent. As some of you may know, over the last few years, especially since the pandemic, most subcommittees have met virtually. So it's nice to actually have a Personal Committee, Committee, Personal and Appointments Committee meeting in person, I think, for the first time as a, that I've been a member of this committee. But there will be a council meeting at 6:30, so we'll keep moving through business. We've done a lot of interviews already. I think some applicants are before us this evening have already interviewed already, so that should save a bit of time. But as Councillor McBride stated, also received several communications regarding various applicants and applications for consideration this evening. I have no other communications, so we will move on to approval of minutes. I sent a short time ago, and Betsy, I'll forward over the minutes to you right now. But earlier today, I just sent over the meeting minutes. I don't have a chance to review it. But Betsy, send you over those.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you have to approve them here. I think that, I don't really know, you know, there's, you know, you have them, you have, everybody has a copy. There's really not a motion for approval of minutes for committees.
Right, um, well, I, I know it typically is a part of our agenda packet. So.
Yeah, you can train that, change that anytime you want.
All right. Um, Betty, I just sent him over to you. But I will make a motion to approve the October. I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the October 18, 2022 meeting minutes.
McBride will second that.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Now on to new business. So we have various appointments for consideration, as I mentioned. Several applicants on tonight's docket have already interviewed, including the first person on our agenda. This would be the appointment of an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Bruce McDermott of 328 Noink Road in Mystic. I move that we nominate Mr. Bruce McDermott to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate with the term expiring 12/31/2026. So moved.
Second, first of all.
Motion by Baumgartner, second by Westerville. Any discussion?
Yeah, the one comment I'd like to have is I did feel in our interview and based upon some past reviews of information with, with Mr. McDermott is I, I think there's a concern possibly that he may be too in favor of one side versus another side in the short-term rental thing situation, but I don't think that's my position to not allow him to get to the council for their full review of him on this committee. So I'm gonna move forward and, and side with the two of you in terms of making that motion to approve the motion, but I do think there's some questions and concerns, and I'd like to see the council do a full review of that to make sure that he is a proper person for that committee.
Councillor Westerville?
I agree with Councillor McBride. We also had some communications today from a citizen along those same lines of concern. As an alternate, I think this will give Mr. McDermott a chance to see more of what that committee does, or what the Planning and Zoning Committee does, and give them more insight into how they're handling SDRs among the other things that they are doing. So I don't think necessarily that's a bad position for him to be in. So I have no reason not to support him going for the alternate position.
So, and I, just for the public, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. McDermott had previously interviewed with us at our last committee meeting, and at this moment, he is the only Planning and Zoning Commission alternate as another applicant. Mr. He did withdraw his application sometime late last month. I do see a hand. Madam Clerk.
Yeah, that's just me. I just wanted to remind the committee that you're recommending, you're not actually voting to approve, you're actually recommending candidates to the council.
Sorry. That's right. So if there's no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. McDermott as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission, please indicate by standing aye. Aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Mr. McDermott. Now we will move on to various reappointments for the Historic District Commission. Madam Clerk, I may need a hand on this, just regarding the order, whether it's appropriate, because I know there certain applicants for the Historic District Commission also serve as alternates. So just as far as the process, kind of what, what the best practice would be to go about voting for, for voting on each of these applicants.
Okay, so you have things from a while back. And, but I will make the recommendation that you reappoint the chair. And then there are two vacancies that the chair, Mr. Goodman, had forwarded recommendations to your committee to move Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Goodrich from alternate to regular. You do have those, I hope, in your packet. I know that, that, that there was a memo and so forth. Okay, so, so there's a reappointment of the chair and then moving two members of the alternate members up, and then you have people that you can interview also with, with us this evening, at least one person.
Okay.
Who also was recommended by the previous chair to be appointed, so.
Okay. All right. So what I will do is I'm, I'm gonna start with the applicant we received or should have received well over a year ago. We'll start with Mr. Goodman, who has already interviewed with us. So I will make a motion to reappoint Mr. Eric Goodman, who currently functions as the chair.
Goodrich, Goodrich.
Mr. Goodman?
Eric Goodrich, Goodrich, not Goodman, Goodrich.
Is he not the chair?
Eric Goodrich, wait a minute, I'm getting this wrong. Goodman is, yeah, the chair is Goodman, and then there's a committee member, Goodrich. Boy, we're gonna have fun.
Yes. Yes, so I will make a motion to appoint, reappoint Mr. Eric Goodman to the Historic District Commission with the term expiring 12/31/2027.
Let me try for a second.
I'm sorry, that's 2026.
Yes, but these are, these are, all of them are vacancies on the Historic District Commission, right?
Well, Mr. Goodman's took a, took a position. I mean, he was just moved up, you know, he, he's been needing a reappointment for over a year, and so his, his he would only get a five-year, that's how it works. You don't make them all even, there's staggers, there's supposed to be staggers.
Even, even though his application was sidelined for, for that one year.
Doesn't matter, it, it didn't change, no, it didn't change his expiration, his expiration was 2021, so you add five to 2021, that's his new, that's how it works.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I will defer to the clerk on that one, so I will. It's okay with the secondor, I believe it was Councillor McBride, I will withdraw that motion and make a another motion to reflect that change. Motion to reappoint Mr. Eric Goodman, currently functions as Chair of the Historic District Commission to a term expiring 12/31/2026. So moved.
McBride will second.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion?
One item I'd like to make, since we did receive some comments from Eric Ford regarding Eric Goodman and some concerns that we had, but it was reviewed by numerous people, and I believe Town Manager Byrne also opined on, he did a review in that there may have been one potential oversight due to training at the initial earlier part of his tenure, but that he didn't think was a concern with some of the comments that were made, so I'm, I'm gonna opine with Town Manager Byrne that there shouldn't, is not a concern that those concerns that were raised were not not necessarily to be looked into further in support of him retaining the chair.
Councillor Westerville? I would just have to echo what Councillor McBride stated, based off of the interview and receiving a plethora of letters, probably over a dozen from various residents in our community, folks who have actually had to work with the Historic District Commission. It was abundantly clear that Mr. Goodman not only has the expertise, the knowledge, the, the know-how, and the, the commitment to serve on this board, has religiously attended meetings, you know, throughout his tenure. But he is also of, you know, high ethical standards, and so, you know, that was in question, and you know, I'm glad we could abate those issues, and it's unfortunate that oftentimes, we have to score. You know, sometimes I'll leave it at that, but, you know, Mr. Goodman did interview with us and spent a lot of time going over, you know, his track record and service in our community, so just wanna thank Mr. Goodman for his service on the Historic District Commission, stepping up to serve as Chair of the Historic District Commission. And we'll be voting to recommend his appointment. And if there's no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Mr. Goodman. Now on to the appointment of John Goodrich of 1315 River Road Mystic to the Historic District Commission, the term expiring 12/31/2027. This would be an elevation from alternate to a regular voting member. Just from observing various meetings. I, you know, in the Historic District Commission, although an alternate, he is not eligible to, to vote on items where there is a full quorum. But despite that, he very much is an active and, you know, active member of the committee, commission. He participates in the discussion and oftentimes brings very important insights that are missing from, from the discussion. So I will be supporting Mr. Goodrich's appointment and ask committee, committee members to do the same. So with that, I'll make a motion to appoint John Goodrich, 1315 River Road Mystic to the Historic District Commission with the term expiring 12/31/2027. So moved. Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any further discussion?
I'll just, I'll just state that I know Mr. Goodrich is basically a historian at heart. His background includes a lot of education in preservation and other avenues, avenues such as that. He's also been very active with the state archaeologists. This is a passion for him, and I think this gives him an opportunity to work well with that team, because that's what his background is. He's also highly regarded, I believe, from what I've read by people and others in the community as well. We've got a lot of levers for him today, so I support him.
Councillor McBride?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make the comment that I did receive, you know, over the last few months, some comments concerning Mr. Goodrich's actions in other non-related items to this, this Historic District Commission. So there were some questions and concerns on appointing him, whatever, I try, I agree with Councillor Westerville that his expertise and his knowledge in this area is, is undoubtedly spectacular, so I support this notion entirely, but I do wanna let people know, I did receive some questioning concerns on some other matters, but they didn't relate to this, and I don't think it should come into bearing with this appointment, so I fully support this as well.
All right, so I have nothing further to, to discuss, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of recommending the appointment of Mr. Goodrich to the Historic District Commission as a regular member, indicate by saying aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Mr. Goodrich. Now on to the appointment of William Ferguson to 118 Edgecombe Street in Mystic to the Historic District Commission, the term expiring 12/31/24. I would note, Mr. Ferguson also is an alt currently an alternate, if I'm not mistaken, and he would be elevated to a regular voting member. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Sorry, I was muted.
It's okay.
Yes, yes, that is correct, and, and he's, you know, he's been serving for several years, so he's, you know, he's got a good resume, too.
Yes, yes, and I've known Mr. Ferguson over the years to be a fair arbiter of the issues, very kind human, which obviously is very badly needed in, certainly any ABC. So I will be voting to elevate Mr. Ferguson to the Historic District Commission. And with that, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. William Ferguson, unaffiliated of 118 Edgecombe Street Mystic to the Historic District Commission with the term expiring 12/31/24. So moved.
McBride will second.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. All right. Now on to the reappointment of Michael Kane of 51 Jupiter Point Road to the Planning and Zoning Commission of the term expiring 12/31/2027. Mr. Michael Kane currently serves on Planning and Zoning Commission. There has been a little bit of turnover over the last few years and months, and so and I think it is important to have continuity, certainly someone who has been steeped in a lot of these hot-button topics that have been in discussion. They work very well together as a group, and I think Mr. Kane is a, is a big contributor to that collegiality within the group, but also brings a level of know-how and expertise as a, you know, lifelong member of our, our community. So I will enthusiastically support his reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And with that, I'll make, formally make a reappointment, a motion to reappoint Michael Kane of 51 Jupiter Point Road to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term expiring 12/31/2027. So moved. Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Mr. Kane. My recommendation. And now on to the reappointment of David Scott, Democrat, who also functions as Chair of the Inland and Wetlands Agency. I will make a motion to reappoint David Scott of 191 Pequah Avenue in Mystic to the Inland Wetlands Agency, the term expiring 12/31/2024.
Second, McBride.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? I will note, Mr. Scott is the chair, and thank Mr. Scott for chairing a very important commission in our community, the Inland Wetlands Agency. So with that, I will call for a vote. All those indicate, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Mr. Scott. Now on to Annie Oosterwein. I will make a motion to reappoint Annie Oosterwein of 229 Fishtown Road in Mystic to the Inland Wetlands Agency with the term expiring 12/31/2024. So moved. Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those indicate by saying, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Annie. Now on to the reappointment of Courtney McCracken. I will make a motion to reappoint Courtney McCracken of 119 Fishtown Road of Mystic to the Inland Wetlands Agency with the term expiring 12/31/2024. So moved.
Seconded, McBride.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Courtney. Now on to the reappointment of alternate Gary Robbins of 22590 Gold Star Highway, number 310 of Mystic to the Inland Wetlands Agency with the term expiring 12/31/2024. So I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Robbins to the, reappoint Mr. Robbins as an alternate to the Inland Wetlands Agency with the term expiring 12/31/2024. So moved. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Congratulations, Mr. Robbins. All right. Alrighty. So we have three more appointments, and I, I brought this up last week, Madam Clerk, and I, I really don't wanna hold up the appointments for, for these items anymore, but I also understand they really haven't had any work to do whatsoever. They may probably the most sporadically compared to any other ABC in our town.
Right. I, I suggested to a previous council they consider disbanding it, because they're really, you know, they, they really isn't, you know, there isn't really any work for them, because laws cover everything, you know? And our town, our town zoning can take care of everything. This, this actually was created as a political pundit, you know? So.
That's right, and if, and if you think about it, I mean, it's just even as far as if you review all the housing in the town, and anything from Grotton Housing Authority to Branford Manor, which is, you know, you can't touch them, you can't touch them, exactly, they're, they're exempt. That's right, they're, they're exempt at all levels. It's explicitly written in our, in the, the resolution in our, you know, our town code. But also, it's, you know, guided by, by state statute as well, so. So with that, though, you know, should we? The, the only thing is, I understand, for example, the Fair Rank Commission, there has to be a certain number of, you know, certain members have to be landlords, certain members have to be renters. However, in, in the, the way the resolution reads, it's either you're those, or if you're not either of those, you have to be a homeowner. So that, that would just by process of elimination, because if you're not a renter, if you, you know, right, if you're not a renter, you're not a landlord, you'd have to be a homeowner, so in which case there are certain spots allocated for renters, certain spots allocated for landlords. So if you are a landlord, for example, and, right, and it says you only, there can only be one landlord and one alternate. Once we make that appointment, that's it, you know, they can't, can't have another landlord, dude. So it's, the, the res, the actual resolution is weirdly worded, and maybe that's something the council, future councils, you know, can tackle. Not sure it's that high on the priority list, but it's still something worth considering, so that, that has always been kind of my holdup, and, you know, do we advance members out and kind of run afoul of our own resolution if there are more than one landlord on the Fair Rank Commission?
Well, that, I, I have to, have to say, you may be interpreting that a little strangely. I think that you can have homeowners, obviously, serve in the non-landlord. Yeah, you know, you wouldn't want all landlords or all tenants on it, because you know, you need a flavor from all different areas, so, you know, but you wouldn't wanna put another landlord or tenant on, because it would be lopsided things, so that's, that was one, that was one you know, maybe that wasn't understood, but the real thing is, I, I think that it should be a topic of discussion solely on its own, and, and to see what kind of, you know, get staff that is familiar with this, and and maybe do a little homework to see what other towns are doing, because I just, you know, I hate to have valuable people volunteer their time and then just spin their wheels, kind of like our Ethics Commission, you know?
Yes. So, hold off, or?
Yeah, I, I would recommend that you make this an item, a sole item for discussion for your committee, and have staff do some reviewing. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You know, the planning staff has all that information.
Okay, I feel, I feel comfortable with that, and, you know, worst-case scenario, though, Betsy, if, if, you know, God forbid, the, the commission needs to meet, right? They, any per, just because they're not reappointed right now and their term expired, they're still technically members until we appoint someone else.
Yeah, it's not even technically, they are members, period.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm not concerned, I'm not concerned. All right, so is that comfortable with that, gentlemen?
Yes, and the first one that expires is until July 23, anyway, so you have time.
Yeah. All right, so I, I think we can hold off on that. As far as, I think that concludes business. Chalking, yes.
I have one question, I think there was an email from Betsy.
Yes, about Mr. Mercer.
And I was, that, actually, I was referring to Ted, Ted Kietzmann.
Yep, Ted Kietzmann, he's actually here, too, and he had been recommended by the previous chairman of the HDC and the current chairman of the HDC to be appointed as an alternate, so he is here in your meeting, if you wanna talk to him. But the other one was a mess-up with the, that was, that was my office messing up Mr. Mercer, he was, his chairman actually wanted, Mr. Stebbins wants to make Mr. Mercer a full member on the ZBA. And, and, and we had it in as a, a reappointment, and you got reappointed to 2027, which was also wrong, but anyway, anyway, so that was the other email today at 3:30.
I missed this one today, all right, thank you.
Catch for the wire.
Yes. Okay, um. And then can you also speak to Ms. Ms. Howling, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The application for, for, from Ms. How, Anne Howling?
Right, we, you have that, but, you know, she hasn't responded to phone calls or emails, and I sent her the link to this meeting as well, as well as Mr. Kaitzman. And you can see Mr. Kaitzman's here. So, you know, I'm, I'm, maybe she's not interested, I don't know, I can't confirm that, so, you know, there, there's time for that.
Okay, and, and just to be clear, she was not indoor, was she, do you know if she was endorsed by the committee?
No, she was not interviewed, she's an unaffiliated voter, I believe. Or maybe not, maybe not, I can't recall, that's a very old application, but I don't get rid of any of them, they're all hanging around forever.
Okay.
She's in, she's in our package.
Okay. All right, um, so with that, I will invite Mr. Kaitzman as, to to, to interview with us. Now that we have, now that we actually have a plethora of alternate openings. All right, Mr. Kaitzman?
He just has to unmute.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, we can. Mr. Kaitzman, thank you for joining us this evening. To at the Council's Personnel and Appointments Committee. I'm not sure if you've followed our our work, but what we do is we often interview candidates who are applying. To our various boards and commissions. So first and foremost, thank you for expressing an interest to get back to your community. But what we do is, you know, subsequently, we then, you know, vote on applicants. And if we vote in the affirmative, that recommendation then goes before the town council at the regular town council meeting. A few weeks later, where that candidate is approved or disproved, and if they are approved, then they. Officially join that border commission they apply to. So again, thank you for expressing an interest to serve on the historic district commission. Obviously, a very important group that does great work in our community and happy to open open the floor to you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you taking some time to to talk with me. First, I my name is Ted Keatsman. It's like. Key key sound Keatsman.
Okay.
I appreciate. Madam Clerk. Sending me the link and getting me connected with you guys this evening. I also. Really appreciate the work you do, since I only realized recently that you're like all unpaid. People and in in terms of the kind of service you do, which is, which is really impressive, I think, because. I've been, I retired two years ago, and I've been going to most of the historic district committee committee meetings over that time. But it took me about two years before I got the courage to apply and and bring my application to Betsy. Because I'm a little worried about you can make, you can make enemies, you know, or make or face confrontations. And so your. Volunteer courage to. To put yourself out there in that position for the betterment of the town is is impressive. And I've. Also come to the conclusion that's something I want to do. Now, I've lived in the, I've lived in the area. Forty years and three different addresses inside in Mystic. And I had a job as an engineer without chemical, and I got to travel the world for them. That's these little flags you maybe can see behind me are different. Plants and operations I got to support and visit. And the reason I wanted to tell you that is that Mystic is a really great place and a very unique place, and its historic atmosphere, neighborhoods. I think brings so much character. Value and attractiveness to the area and the town that's. That's surprisingly unique. And I mean, it's, some people maybe don't care for it. I think it's fantastic. And so I think the commission does a great service to the town and trying to maintain that. Character and that attractiveness. That valuable and kind of irreplaceable thing we've got. That we've. Are the benefits of, right, are benefited from. So I I'm familiar with the other commissioners, and I think I get along with all of them. I obviously am as a, as a. Free citizen participant at the meetings. I. Occasionally have asked questions and and spoken and. Both for and against other. Other things that were brought in front of the commission. So I feel I feel that I'm already a little bit grounded in in the nature. Of the commission and also its responsibilities to the town that you might recall the commission had a. A briefing with the lawyer earlier this this year, and I attended that and understood that. There is, understand some of the complicated or perhaps legal things that. You want your commissioners to be aware of and 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 how they discharge their duties. So. I I think I have a balance between. Compassion or empathy really for the applicants that are trying to better their homes and. And houses and livelihoods. I mean, and that's very nice, but also to continue maintaining the character that the district already has. So I think I've talked, hopefully you've gotten a sense for who I am or what I'm, why I'm motivated to be on the commission. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Kaitzman, for sharing your insights and obviously you have participated in several meetings already. Which at least personally gives me comfort knowing that should you be appointed, you. Know, will need to learn the ropes, if you will. You participated, you understand how business is conducted. So that is a big plus in my eye. So I I have no other questions. Counselors, do you have any questions?
No, excuse me, no questions, but want to thank you for coming out for the interview. Your application and your resume spoke for itself, and you kind of indulged upon your level of experience and. Tenacity for making sure we we follow things properly and and your commitment. You know, for the last year fourteen meetings or so you participated in shows that you want to be involved for the committee for the right reason. So I think you're the. You're the prime candidate for someone who we want to put on a committee, who's experienced. Isn't just to join the committee. They've been involved for a while. So appreciate your passion and I'll fully support you on this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will also say that I believe reading through your resume. With some of the memberships that you have, I think you're a perfect person for this position. The fact that you stuck it out, you know, voluntarily for quite some time. Spaced to your willingness to do this, and I appreciate that. We don't have enough people who step forward to do this, so I very much appreciate your efforts. And you're willing just to participate.
Thank you. I have no further questions. So thank you again, Mr. Kaitzman, Madam Clerk. As far as the alternate, the appropriate alternate position to, if we were to make a motion this evening.
Mm hmm. Yes.
As far as the vacancies go, where it would be appropriate, but just as far as the 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 term expiration. Would it be for so twelve twelve thirty one twenty 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 five?
Boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, I don't have that information. Let me see, let me see. I do have that information if I could find my sheet. I got it. I got it. Okay, so. Yes, so. Saying that the other two appointments are taken up, so you have two twenty twenty five. Alternate positions. So it'd be, it'd be December thirty first twenty twenty five would be the expiration.
Okay, and that that would leave us with one alternate remain, should we, you know, all these appointments go through, there would be one vacancy remaining as in for an alternate position.
That's correct.
Excellent. All right. So with that, I will make a motion to appoint Ted Keatsman of twenty five West Mystic Avenue of Mystic. To the personal, I'm sorry, to the historic district commission with the term expiring twelve thirty one twenty twenty five so moved.
Right, well, second.
Moved by Bum Gardner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Keatsman as an alternate to the historic district commission indicate by saying I.
I.
Oppose abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Congratulations, Mr. Keatsman.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your interest in serving your community.
So the next step you understand is going to the town council next month. Okay. You'll get, you'll get the notification from my office plus all the accoutrements that you'll need.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Kaitzman. Have a great rest of your evening.
All right.
All right. Take care.
Bye.
All right. So we closed out that order of business. I think we're good.
Well, you do have some old business, but I don't know if you want to do anything with it.
I will, I'll.
Pretty old. It's a, it's the town council appointment to the. Citizen Police Committee.
Oh, yes.
I'll bite the bullet and put it on the agenda.
Yeah. It was, was it on our, I mean, it wasn't on our agenda, but.
No, it's old business. It's been hanging around. I still have the the memo. It was never, it was never finished. You know, you. You had talked about giving it to the town council, but you have to have a motion. You know, you have to have something to give to the council. So in other words, you'd say, well, I want to, you know, the committee wants to appoint two people. And then forward those names, and then it would get to go to the council.
But ultimately, because of the resolution, the way it was written. Actually, and that reminds me, there those appointments should be up for a reappointment anyway, very soon, if if not now.
I think you're right. I think you're absolutely right. I I'm looking at it right now. Yeah, the citizens, where did they go? They're up there. Citizens. Citizens, yeah, they're all expiring next year, twenty twenty three, it'd be October. Fifth twenty twenty three.
That's right. So we'll take that up as a as a whole slate or a group on for our next committee meeting. As now folks are already starting to walk in.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a year away or ten months from now that that they have to be reappointed or not. It might be, it might be something you want to do in July.
July. All right. Well, we will take note of that. I'm I'm good. How are you? All right. So with that, thank you, Madam Clerk. For your support as always, and. There is no other business. I I will make a motion to adjourn. Moved by Bum Gardner, seconded by Westerville. All those in favor?
I.
Oppose abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. We are adjourned at six fifteen P M. Thank you, team, and.